Good morning. I want to welcome all of you to our Rankin County Board of Supervisors December 16th, 2019 Board Meeting. I'm glad you're here. I thank you for taking time to come here. I see a couple of guys that are here about as often as I am. We live in a great county and we have, I think, the greatest employees. And I want to take this minute to thank everybody from the Sheriff's Department, Board of Supervisors, Human Resources, Renee's office. People don't know how hard their county employees work and how dedicated they are. And it's unbelievable at nine o'clock at night, sometimes I get an email or a call from one of our county employees that are working, they're not getting overtime. So I thank all of you. And we're having a little gathering after the meeting for our employees. So anybody that's here, you want to join us, please stay.
But you've got to be at the back of the line, right?
Back of the line. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask Craig Slay. Craig, would you say a prayer for us?
What an incredible privilege it is, the freedoms that we enjoy here in this country to come before you first and foremost before we start our meeting. To thank you for your presence here with us, Lord, to ask you, Lord, that you give us the wisdom and the discernment, Father, a portion of your power that we need today to conduct the business of the county. I thank you, Lord, that we can gather together in these freedoms and we can conduct the business of the county together, Father, that our citizens can participate in what happens in their government. It's an incredible privilege, Lord, and sometimes we take it for granted. Thank you, Lord, for the gift of your Son Jesus, who at this time of year, Father, we celebrate his coming. Father, I pray that each of us would make room for that gift in our hearts and that, Father, we would carry that gift with us so that the world will know that we believe in you, Father, that we follow your precepts, Father, we want the obedience to you in Christ's name.
Amen. All right. Under public comments, Mr. Charlie. Our newly-elected county prosecutor. Sir, you can sit or stand or however you want to do it.
You're the prosecutor.
I've given her a handout, and it's actually the same handout that I've given you earlier. I've emailed it to each of you. But I wanted to talk about a couple of things. I've distributed that letter to each of the judges, the newly-elected judges, including the two current ones. That will be Judge Redfern, Judge McCrory, Judge Agnew, and Judge Adams. I asked for any comments. Judge Redfern called each of them and said that they each said that they, he discussed it with them and they fully support my request. Jessica Massey, our court clerk, is already setting trials for April and May, and this, we're not even into January yet. And the county prosecutor is also going to be doing county appeals, and they're being set in March already. I'll be meeting periodically with the defendants where the judges allow them to be on a payment plan. And what I intend to do is if they're not doing their payment plans and they have the ability to pay, I'm going to be asking the judge to handle that, to make sure they understand they are going to pay or they're going to go to jail if they have the ability to pay. I'm asking you to let me appoint a full-time assistant prosecutor, like I mentioned, in that thing. The full-time prosecutor then would be available, one of us would be available to speak with the judges, the law enforcement, the deputy court clerks, community development, board members, and anybody else that needs to do that. If you don't give me a full-time prosecutor, I'm asking that you give me, let me have two part-times like Richard Wilson did, and ask that their pay be set at $40,000 a year because they're not going to be allowed to supplement their income by representing anybody in justice court criminal matters. But it makes more sense to have a full-time assistant rather than two part-time ones because one of us would always be there. One of us may be over in Judge McDaniel's courtroom, one of us may be in front of one of the other judges, but somebody always would be present to talk to everybody. What I'm asking you to do is to amend the budget to give the pay that I've requested in that letter for my pay and to amend the budget to set the pay for the assistant prosecutors, hopefully one full-time, if not one full-time, two part-time. And then I'm asking you to authorize me to appoint somebody. We've got cases that are going to be set for, they're set for trial on January the 9th, which is three days after, I understand we don't take office now until January the 6th, but I've got trials set then, and I need to be able to have somebody that's going to be on board to help with all this, and I'm asking you to allow me to do that. And obviously, I can't do that until you authorize me to do that. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, and if you want me to come back later at the end of the thing, I'd be glad to come back or whenever you want to deal with it. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
Do, so I don't need to come back, is what you're saying?
I don't think so, sir. I think you've explained it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And if anybody does have any questions, you can text me or call me.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, that letter was too sad. I was trying to save the courage.
Thank you. We will, sorry.
Go ahead. Look at where we are.
Do we want to handle this right here or do we want to wait and go?
Executive.
Okay. Executive, okay. All right, let's move to O business.
Motion approved.
All right, I got a motion by Jared, second by Daniel, to approve our O business. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
All right. Bob makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. Jared seconds. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Sullivan.
Keep your seat, Mr. Sullivan. I make a motion to approve A and B. Sorry, I meant to get your heart inside.
Second. All right. Bob makes a motion to approve A and B, which are just petitions for change of assessments that are pretty routine, and Jared seconds that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
John, you moved a little fast, Mr. Parker. Should have given a little more time.
Well, he didn't move it. He didn't move this far.
You weren't anticipating that fast move on John's part.
Thank you, sir. I have one item on the agenda this morning. This is on Mill Creek Subdivision Drainage Improvement. We recommend approval of pay application number four.
This is the last one, is it not?
I thought the last three were the last.
You're thinking of Oak Grove.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
I'm thinking this one. I forgot about the same spine tingling effect of Oak Grove.
How many more payouts you think we have on this one?
You'll probably have one or two.
Till we get to $500,000.
I was thinking it was Oak Grove, too.
I lost count where we are now. I thought we were there.
The one thing I want to mention, though, I'm going to make a motion to approve, but I want to make one comment on it. I just want to be sure that we follow back up as a reminder to those guys of the area that they're using, that empty lot next to the tennis courts and rec area over there is not a property of the H.O.A., it's not a common space.
Right.
It's been given permission, I believe, now, after it's been done, for them to store their equipment and all there.
Right.
I want to be sure that utility contractors understand that that lot area will be made-back whole, cleaned up, if we need to put seed down or whatever, leveled back out to the way it was.
Sure.
Be sure that area is good to go for those guys.
We will do that. Yes, sir.
So with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve number four.
Second.
All right. Daniel makes a motion to approve the payment for Mill Creek. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Slay.
Mr. President, I make a motion to reconsolidate A, B, C, and D together as one motion for set those areas to January 2nd.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion to consolidate A, B, C, and D, which are all in District, nope, we got District Two and Three, and One, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This is, but we're just setting.
And Four.
I think everybody's got something special.
Did he say E?
You say, you want to go through E?
No, he can't do E.
He used a different date.
Right. All right.
A through D.
Bob makes a motion. Daniel seconds motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve E.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve E, which is in District Four, and Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item F is our annual opportunity for public comment regarding Rankin County Stormwater Management Program. This time, that public hearing was set, the last board meeting is set for today. This time, we'll open the floor and open a public hearing for comments from the public regarding Rankin County Stormwater Management Plan. Is there anyone here to speak on the Rankin County Stormwater Management Plan? Anyone? Mr. Parker, you have anything to say about the stormwater plan?
Hearing nothing from the engineer. We will close that public hearing. There is no action that needs to be taken.
All right.
Mr. President, item G is authorization to retain Headwaters, Inc. to conduct the required environmental assessment for the Florence BioParkway Project, AKA Gunner Road Extension, at a cost of $18,500, and authority for the Board President to execute all required documentation associated with that retention.
Motion approved.
All right.
All right. Jared. Jared makes motion to approve. Bob seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That, and I should have did, should have done this under other discussion because I imagine I'm going to have something similar to this on Andrew Chapel, but is this just a study to make sure that our road is not going to be flooded after we build it?
Actually, I don't anticipate that you're going to have anything on Andrew Chapel because in that particular case, all of the right-of-way has either been acquired or is in the process of being acquired. This is an assessment that is related to right-of-way that will be acquired in the future on this project.
It's more environmental study.
That's correct. It's an environmental. That's correct. That was actually handled previously.
Okay.
On Andrew Chapel.
All right. Well, we had the motion and votes and passed. All right, H.
Item H is a little bit of housekeeping. This is a parcel of property, K-1612244, that's owned by Brian Herring and Kelly Herring. This was a piece of property that is on Highway 471 before you get back to Highway 43. It's on that far north end up there, Steve, close to where the fellow was asking about the gas station.
Yes, sir.
You recall at that intersection?
Yes, sir.
So this is just south of that intersection right there to orient you back. At least a couple of years ago, maybe farther back than that, there was an undeveloped Phase Two of what is Harbor Gate subdivision. Familiar with that, Daniel? That subdivision went into HOCC, was foreclosed upon by Bank Plus. Bank Plus came to the county and said, this is not going to be developed into zero block line. It'll be much lower density development. We would like to break this property up. All of the parcels will have frontage. At the time, the county agreed to allow Bank Plus to subdivide the property four different ways, all with frontage. The county said, no further subdividing without county authorization. Okay? Bank Plus sold one of the parcels to a fellow, and it turns out that the property, it's about almost five acres, it's four and a half plus acres. The fellow's trying to sell that four and a half acre piece of property, but the way that it lays out, the orientation, the topography, it's not conducive to selling as one block. And so he has a plan to divide that four acre to five acre piece into two, two and a quarter acre pieces of property, both of which will have, and Daniel, you've talked to him, I think, I think he's planning 2,800-plus square feet houses. I mean, these are larger houses.
Yeah, I've been talking to Mr. Herring on it, and he's got a really good plan, and it's going to really flow and give the area, really nice houses and an area set up on that same side. So he's got a good plan, reputable guy, he's going to do what he says.
Right. The way we structured this, the board did, was no further subdividing without county authority.
Yep.
So you're just being asked to authorize this one splitting of a four acre into a two acre, into two two acres.
I'll make, I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Daniel makes a motion to approve. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Southern Tire Recycling is planning to add a piece of equipment that will allow them to be more efficient in their business. So this is a matter of housekeeping. DEQ requires, before they will allow the acquisition of this piece of equipment for the tire recycling operation, DEQ requires the applicant to come back and get a letter of good standing from the county. We're asking, he has been checked on, he is in good standing. So we're asking you guys to authorize, Steve is Board President, to execute the letter of good standing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion to approve. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item J, and my hope is that this will be the last time you're asked to pass over an item like this since we are now about to enter January. This is authorization under Section 191127 to make a specific finding that the activities and expenditures that I'm about to read are essential to the efficiency and economy of the operation of the county. Installation of the Truck Scales Foundation and approaches at the new maintenance facility, and award of the bid to Manzel Construction in the amount of $20,862. The authorization to issue payment for these activities expenditures upon receipt of appropriate invoices following completion of the work authorized or delivery of the equipment, as the case may be. So that's, that's an item that we need to pass.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Where's Manzel from? Mike?
He's up in the town.
Okay. Good Lord. Think the local guy could have gotten that.
It's perfect, he just knew.
Yeah, well, we bid it. Yeah. Huh. Quite right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all, I'm just curious. Motion approved.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah. That's all.
Item K, Mr. President, is authorization of the Board President to execute the renewal and extension agreement between Rankin County and Stan Tech Consulting for traffic signal maintenance and upkeep. This primarily affects District Two up around the reservoir. Extension renewal is for one year, beginning January 1 and ending December 31. The renewal will be on the same terms and conditions as the original agreement with no increase in cost for Rankin County.
Only if I come down to Lewis Wilson 80 and fix something down there. Will I prove it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. We got a motion by Daniel, second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item L, Mr. President, is one we don't get very often. This is acknowledgment of receipt of a written notification from the Rankin County Tax Collector of her retirement effective December 31, 2019. Acknowledgement that the retirement of the tax collector will create a vacancy in the office of the Rankin County Tax Collector for the period January 1, 2020 through midnight January 5, 2020. So appointment of Tax Collector-elect Caroline Gilbert to fill the unexpired term of Judy Fortenberry as Rankin County Tax Collector for the period January 1, 2020 until her successor, her, is qualified and installed. The authority of the county administrator to secure and pay for any bond that's required, and authority of Caroline Gilbert to execute requisitions and all of the documentation associated with the office of tax collector from and after December 16.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Daniel makes motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, this is, item M is simply an acknowledgment on part of the board that we've received notice from the Rankin County Circuit Clerk of a project to alter and upgrade the facilities at the Circuit Clerk's office to provide hot water supply to the kitchen and the bathrooms and some other improvements. All improvements will be paid for using Circuit Clerk fee account funds. So there's authorization for the Circuit Clerk to proceed. That's, it's our building. You guys have statutory authority over that facility. So you're just simply acknowledging it and authorizing it to proceed.
I thought you had to bill stuff on hot water in it these days.
That goes back 20 years.
Even then, I thought you still had to do it.
Well, maybe so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Bob, a second by Daniel. Under discussion, I think what, way it's been explained to me is whenever the DA's office had water run to it, they tied into the water. It didn't completely cut the water off to Ms. Judy's office, but the way it was deferred, the hot water runs in a different direction, and they hadn't had any. They can't wa, I say they can't, they can wash a coffee cup, they just don't have any warm water to wash it with. And this should have been done years ago.
That's odd, did it, did it happen?
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item M is a follow-up to the prior discussion from prior board meeting. Authorization for representatives of Rankin County professional staff, that would be the board lawyer, Brunini counsel, and Wagner, to travel to DC in January to meet with congressional staff and appropriate agency personnel to discuss the Rankin County Stormwater Management Program. And this authorization would limit the travel expense reimbursement to not to exceed $5,000.
Yeah, I'll just pick my mind on this first. I'm not, I'm not in favor of this. I mean, I, I just, I thought I made that clear to those guys the other day when we were in here, and I just, I don't know if that's the right way to do it.
I just don't know, I'm not, I'm kind of with you. I'm not so sure about.
Let's just go on to O.
No action taken.
All right. No action taken.
Item O is a discussion of resolutions of pending matters involving Almond Realty and Associates and Indian Mound Properties LLC and potential action to resolve those disputes. I have Mr. Freddie Harrells here on behalf of, well, I'll let Mr. Freddie decide for himself who he's here on behalf of, but Mr. Freddie's here, he's been very helpful to discuss both of these matters with me. Mr. Pete Almond is here, and also Mr. Ken Hall with Indian Mound Properties LLC is here. Gentlemen, what, what we're hopeful of doing here is to resolve two matters that are pending before the board, one of which, I'll list them both. One is the leasehold interest for the tax collector's office at Flowood. As you recall, we negotiated and entered into a five-year lease agreement with Almond Realty and Associates, Inc. for leasing the space. At the time that the, the space was leased, we leased only one bay, only one unit. A second unit that is immediately adjacent to the unit we occupied became available. And so the discussion ensued about the county picking up the additional bay for more space. Ms. Judy's commentary was that the traffic for the Flowood Tax Collector office operation has increased steadily over time and that they see some pretty significant congestion from time to time and that they could use the additional space. The board saw fit to go ahead and lock down the additional space. To put those two bays together, there had to be some modification work done. Initially, the, the board believed that we could handle the modifications in-house. After discussions, it became clear and apparent that we were not going to be able to do that work in-house. So we went back and in a process got with Mr. Pete about having him as landlord take care of the modification, and then we would come back and discuss how it is that the county was going to take care of that additional cost. Okay? So that's sort of where we got to. During the process, the modifications changed a little bit or morphed a little bit. The cost of the modifications were substantially more than the initial estimates. The initial estimate was in the neighborhood of about $20,000, give or take, to get the work done. The actual cost turned out to be closer to, between $46,000 and $47,000. So over twice what the initial estimate had been. And so what we want to try to do today, as, as best we can, is to arrive at a way to resolve that particular issue. Mr. Pete is also a member of Indian Mound Properties LLC, that is the developer of the Indian Mound subdivision in Bob's district down in the Johns community. That is a large lot development. Over time, I think that, that actual development, and I can be correct on this, but I think it began life back in the mid-'90s to late-'90s. That large lot development has developed significantly over time, but the primary development activity out there has been large houses, large residence, single-family residences built on large lots, running anywhere from, on average, three to as, as big as 25 acres. We've got some really significant lots that are out there. The, the accesses, at the time that those were installed, were installed as gravel roads, and they did not meet any sort of county specification at that time. I will say that when this thing began life, the county was really in the infancy stage of development ordinances. And so some of this overlapped at a point in time when the county didn't really have a communicable standard for road development in place. And so the process through time has been that people have moved in out there in significant residences, and the, the roads, I think without argument, have not been maintained and could not be maintained by the county to any particular standard, and it's becoming more and more difficult for the maintenance of the roads to continue. So we were approached and asked, as the county, to consider taking over maintenance of one of the roads in particular called Indian Mound Ridge. So we've been discussing how we could get that resolved. So you've got two things that are standing before you to be resolved. One is the tax collector, Flowood Tax Collector operation issue, the other is Indian Mound subdivision, Indian Mound Ridge. So we think we've arrived at a way to resolve both. So I'm going to present now what we think we can live with from, by way of a resolution, and you guys can decide whether or not we can get both of these things resolved on these terms. Okay? And I'm going to give these guys an opportunity to speak on the terms that I present, so I don't want them to think this is like an all-or-nothing thing here, okay? So I'm going to present the terms and then give them an opportunity to discuss it if they wish to. We believe.
Can I stop you one second? I know you guys are trying to think. Are we, just so I'm clear, we're talking about, talking about both these at the same time?
Yes, sir. Yes. One, one offer that solves both of these issues so that we can put both of them to bed.
But aren't they really two separate things?
They are, but my hope is that because they have common ownership interests, that one will feed into getting the other one done. If that makes sense?
Sorry about that.
All right. And by the way, that question has been raised to me directly, why, why are these together? So you're looking at the guy responsible for why these are together. I want to make that clear. My thought was, let's get them both done.
Figure it out.
Let's, let's get them both done. Let's get them over with. So let's talk about the Indian Mound situation. Over the last, probably year or longer, Mr. Hall and Mr. Almond have been steadily beefing up Indian Mound Ridge, which is a road that is, what, Bob, about a mile and a half in length? Is that right, Mike?
Comes off of Ashley Road, it's the road that comes off Ashley Road, and it ties into the cul-de-sac that we maintain, that's chipset that we maintain.
Right. So roughly about a mile and a half of road. Over the last year, the developers have been steadily beefing up, adding gravel, doing some, some limited ditch work out there, some, some limited drainage work, and, and trying to get it to a point where it has some structure that we can work with. We put an offer on, we talked to them about what sort of base material could be installed. We talked about that cost.[1720.83] Over the last year, the developers have been steadily beefing up, adding gravel, doing some, some limited ditch work out there, some, some limited drainage work and, and trying to get it to a point where it has some structure that we can work with. We put an offer on, we talked to them about what sort of base material could be installed. We talked about that cost. And so as a part of that discussion, we arrived at a, the possible resolution by just simply having the developer write a check to Rankin County that would be representative of the cost to the county to install the base material. All right? That number that was initially presented was a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to get that done. They, they checked on whether or not that could work. They came back and said, that's a little stiff. Can we keep talking? And so we have maintained an open channel of communication. Tax collector. We believe that what the board was presenting was an estimate for twenty thousand dollars to do the work. I believe that the board is in a position to write a check for twenty thousand dollars, a lump sum check for twenty thousand dollars to cover the initial estimate. Okay? That's what the board was presented. Board said, we can live with that, let's go get the work done. It turns out that the work that was requested was significantly more than the, the estimate had assumed it would be.
You're now on the building.
That's correct. Keep those two things in mind.
Okay.
Okay? So the, the tax collector office resolution would be write a lump sum check for twenty thousand dollars today and then allow for a payment of the balance, some portion of the balance, whatever the board decides, over the, the length of the remaining rental term or some portion of the rental term. So Mr. Almond would get his twenty thousand dollar estimate now and we need to talk about how do we pay for a balance portion of that? What will be the balance portion and how are we going to pay for that? Okay? And so that would be my suggestion of how we get these both resolved. The Indian Mound Ridge, we need a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And Mr. Almond is prepared to write a check to Rankin County, Mr. Almond and Mr. Hall are prepared to write a check to Rankin County for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for us to take responsibility for finishing out Indian Mound Ridge. What you would be accepting, what the county would be accepting is Indian Mound Ridge, the road. That is it. None of the other accesses out there, none of the other roads out there would be accepted by the county until such time as they are brought up to the county standard. Make that clear.
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
Do they have the right-of-way for the road that's dedicated from the landowners?
Thank you for mentioning that. One of the steps of the process that we engaged a year ago on was how do we make sure that the county ends up with actual right-of-way?
Ownership.
Yes, sir. So as a part of that process, when they were initially out there doing the gravel installation and some other minor improvements, they secured back from the individual property owners the necessary right-of-way. And I have a certificate of title from Mr. Harrell that tells us that we can now accept that road and a dedicated right-of-way. So yes, sir, that's been resolved.
Is it our standard right-of-way?
It would be our sixty-foot right-of-way, that's correct. Yes, sir. It's our standard sixty-foot right-of-way.
Are we, are we talking about something in the neighborhood of a chip seal and a fog? Or are we, what are we, what are we looking at, Mike?
We're looking at a few different things, Steve, it's just, it's going to be some asphalt.
Right, but I mean, there's a lot of difference in the cost.
Cost. That's what he's asking. But if it won't take chip seal, what's the next thing going to be? Base. All right, then that's, I think that's what he's getting at, the cost, it's going to be a big difference. If he does chip seal, yeah, be-
The money is covering the base.
Huh?
Money is covering the base, but-
Okay.
But then the chip seal, but if you don't, if it, if it won't hold the chip seal, you have to come back with asphalt?
Well, he's saying the money, the money they're talking about will pay for a base asphalt.
A base though, but that's not a finish.
And then you have to chip seal it. Can you do that for that money? Brad, how you feel? And I know this is probably wrong for me to ask that to somebody sitting out there, but it is going to be in their-
Not to push you on the spot or anything like that.
No, not that.
You will be-
Well, you've been, I mean, in two weeks.
He, he's going to have to listen to it, you know, so he needs to have input. And he has, he was in the meeting when we discussed it initially, so he's been invited in the loop.
I can go with the Indian Ridge, but all these feeder roads coming off of it, we need to make sure they get to county standard.
Yeah, well, we're just talking about this one, I think we're talking about-
This, this one.
The money bars.
That, that's all been cleared and Ken had been clear about that one. It's just this road, you know, and, and I even recommended it, if this, if the board sees fit to approve it, that we send letters to all registered owners out there to let them know what the board has done, so there is no miscommunication about what's going to happen now that this has happened. So everybody's understanding, this is a one-shot deal. The county will take this on for the money, the money we've talked about and we're done with it out there. Anything else? They got to be whatever that current standard is down the road.
Others will be aware rather than looking at where they're coming to us next.
Right, I mean, that's just my thought. So that's, that's the gist.
So the compromise for us is, the compromise for us is that obviously the, the initial offer on Indian Mound Ridge encompassed the possibility of some inflation, some, we knew that there would be some delay because of weather considerations. And so we packed in some, some additional potential cost overruns that would be unanticipated. The, the compromise would put us in a position where we have a very thin margin on our pricing. We may be slightly under or slightly over what it actually costs, but it's going to be much, much closer now.
Okay, what happens if some reason it comes probably over?
Let me, let me address one other thing real quick, we really hadn't brought up much. Ken and Pete, correct from wrong, you know, Freddie, we're about, what, two lots shy of being totally developed along that road. I mean, pretty much as far as, I would say eighty, eighty-five percent of the, of the tracks out there have houses on the mound.
Yes, sir.
You know, so and the county's been generating ad valorem, I mean, two, between two to three thousand dollars a year from these folks. And I'm not trying to match it up, but they're not getting anything for the money they put in. So, and granted, this was not part of it, but there has been some money in, into the general fund out there that they're not getting the benefit from, you know, so, and I don't know what that number is exactly, but it's, you know, it'll add up, you know, something. So, I mean, it kind of adds a little gravy to any potential overrun or, you know, other issues like that when we get ready to address it.
So as a part of the compromise now, we're asking the developer, we will take the road, we will take it off of your hands and we will complete the structure for that particular road ourselves, admittedly using your money, but the risk of a cost overrun would then be assumed by the county. In exchange for that compromise, we're asking Mr. Pete and his group at Almond Realty to accept only a lump sum of the estimate that was given to us for the tax collector rehab and accept whatever balance the board wants to agree upon over time.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I just don't want y'all thinking I went out there and made a whole bunch of changes because when the three of the supervisors went out there and looked at it, their suggestion was to do exactly what we did.
That's right.
Return it. And that's what Pete did, so we did not make any grand changes up there.
I, I think we're, from my understanding, the difference in, in most of this cost, we originally was thinking move the cabinets. And Jared and I both said if we start doing that, they're not going to be able to do it. They're going to come apart. Well, sure enough, they had to build new cabinets. And as we all know, those kind of things are the highest dollar things you go into a house is the millwork and stuff like that. We, I mean, we looked at it, Jared, I remember Jared saying, be sure to try and pull this stuff up, move it, it's coming apart. And it, I think that is the difference. I would like to do something, the twenty thousand, and if Pete can work with the sum and instead of whatever, forty-six, forty-eight or whatever, let us split twenty thousand additional dollars over the life of that lease or over two years or three. Help us out a little bit, Pete, you know, with the, I think it's six or seven thousand over forty. Let's both, I mean, we didn't anticipate it being that much, he didn't anticipate it, but we have taxpayers that we have to look out for.
Really, the only, the only thing we need to arrive at, as far as I can tell, is what is the balance that the board's willing to pay? Steve, I think what you're saying is, let's do an additional twenty, we're going to do a lump sum, immediate payment of twenty thousand, it's already been authorized, and we're going to do a twenty thousand dollar extra and pay that over some period of time. And so we just need to discuss-
Pete will work, I mean, just work with us on that other.
See, what-
We didn't, we didn't expect-
And what you're saying, true, Judy, but what really got the initial thing was one thing and then I guess, kind of like taking a car to shop, you're going to pay a thousand dollars, you go there, pick it up, you're paying three, you know, so I, and you don't know what happened. So, I mean-
You know, he hit you a breakdown, but, you know, we didn't refinish the whole thing because you couldn't have two different finishes on it.
Yeah.
That was more, I mean, that's-
Well, I understand what happened, that's what we, I was afraid was going to happen, that's really what we were trying to, because of, I mean, what, I knew what was going to probably happen once you started trying to move things and then you're going to break places in your floor and you got to patch them, then you got to restain the floor because that underneath is a different color than what everybody's been walking on. So I knew all that was coming, but I didn't, we never saw anything to kind, I guess, let us know ahead. Like sometimes, like you say, car shop, they give you calls, hey, you got a whole lot more wrong here. And we didn't, we didn't get that.
But you still pay for it when you get your car out.
Sometimes I negotiate, yes. Or I tell them, don't fool with us, I'll come do it.
I, I told these guys I'd, I'd give them an opportunity. Would this be a good time?
Do y'all want to speak on anything that's been said at this point?
Heck, I wouldn't.
Good morning and Merry Christmas. We're glad to be here this morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for your patience through all of this. But, yes, what, we saw this originally as two separate distinct items, Mr. Morrison, and we, we agreed. But on the other hand, if you, if Craig is wanting us to, to try to work these out together, I think it's a good idea to resolve both.
Yeah, well, they are two different ones.
Yeah, but they are two different, two different items. I think from talking to the guys and looking at the maps, it's probably about on the Indian Mound Ridge Road, probably about fifteen to eighteen current large homeowners on that road, you know, just, just for your consideration. And I did do the title work and, and the title work is clean. The guys have, have gone in and done what was necessary and gotten a survey on it. And, and I sent a certificate to Craig based upon that. So we are ready to execute the, the right-of-way as far as that part is concerned. And then as far as the amounts were concerned, the initial offer of the supervisors through Craig was a hundred and thirty-five thousand. But after some discussion about that maybe being excessive as to the actual cost that it would take to, to do that base, subject to your approval, we talked about a hundred and fifteen thousand. And I have a hundred and fifteen thousand this morning that Mr. Almond brought, and I think he got last week, should the board decide that that was a reasonable, maybe not the perfect thing, but the reasonable thing to do. And we're in hopes-
So the original thought was a hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Yes, that was the original discussion, but that included, I think, from what Craig had said, some, some extra, from y'all's standpoint, in there for, for a possible cost overrun, but, but, but the closer amount to the actual cost for the base, I think, would have been around the hundred and fifteen, as best as a human being can estimate. And it was in the nature, the hundred and fifteen thousand being in the nature of a, of a, of a compromise between, you know, regarding what they had done already on the road. Actually, since we met, since we had the meeting, Ken and Pete went back out and did a considerable amount of extra structural work getting the, the road, that one single road in shape for later pavement or, or whatever the supervisor wanted to do. And I think that satisfied at that time a lot of the homeowners out there and it, and it helped upgrade the road as well. So I think that was money well spent on their part. And then since that time, we, we end up, Craig and I end up discussing a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar figure, which we are prepared to, to turn, tender today if the board supervisors sees fit.
So, so if my head's right, we're taking twenty thousand dollars off the road, right, down to one fifteen, so we're lowering that cost and then we're only absorbing seven thousand off the building? Giving them an additional twenty?
Six, seven, yeah.
An additional twenty to the building? In, in excess of the twenty we agreed on?
Yeah. Twenty was, I don't remember the exact numbers, twenty or twenty-two?
Twenty-one, something like that.
Something.
So, the final, the final bill in the building was forty-seven thousand and the board approved twenty thousand. And we got twenty-seven thousand in additional cost is what we're trying to negotiate how we pay it off after we lower the road down twenty-five thousand. All right, so.
The initial estimate was in the neighborhood of twenty-one, I'm usually twenty because it's easier.
I think you're right. I think you're right. It is, you know, I'm talking about a thousand dollars.
I think the final figure was forty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars.
I, I guess what I'm trying to do is trying to make sense of it all.
Yeah, I totally understand. Yeah, I'm trying to make sense of it myself as we speak because one doesn't really necessarily relate to the other.
I mean, it's two separate things and I think our building, we had things that we didn't expect. The, the road, these people have been paying taxes for twenty years, some of them, and county taxes, and it was a private road and they knew it was a private road, I live on one. I mean, I understand all that. But if they're willing to come to us and in effort to make it whole, I mean, Mike says he can do it.
I guess my question, do we lose more money like this?
Problem is, what's overrun?
I say we, I mean, let's take, take them separate, take them separate and-
My question, if you're saying one fifteen, it's one fifty. So that's the only thing, we don't know what the overrun would be on the road.
And it may not be any, you know.
And I'm saying what, and what Steve just alluded to, to the people have been paying taxes over the last ten years will more than compensate for any overrun potentially, because they ain't got anything other than what Ashley Road-
It depends on what the overrun is.
Yeah, I just hope, I mean, I can find out exactly what the amount is, I can go get John's office and find out what the taxes are that have been paid in from those folks that have overrun.
You're talking about fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
Probably at least, yeah. I mean, you know, so I mean, that would cover any, you know, any overrun that may exist out there, so. But we feel pretty good, Mike feels pretty, I had Mike and Tim both just sit down a really hard number so that we didn't, not giving away.
Where did the one thirty-five come from?
We initially came up, uh-
Board lawyer.
Board lawyer.
I didn't, I didn't know where the one thirty-five came from.
I, I knew we were entering into a season of working with the developer to arrive at a compromise solution.
Yeah, I hope Craig knows more about the cost of asphalt or pavement than, than this lawyer does, but it was a starting point for us to, to begin, you know, the discussion.
I, I'd personally like to think about it myself because I, it's not G-haul in my head.
We, we need to handle the building because we got a lease that needs some work. I mean, we got, I, I'm okay, I mean, I, I guess I'm okay with not putting out either one of them, but we, I think we, nothing's going to change on the-
If, if I may-
Nothing's going to change, we're going, we're going to be, one, either way, we're going to be doing it.
The strong desire was, the strong desire on my part was to, to compromise and resolve both of these matters contemporaneously. And out of fairness to our guests who are here to talk about this, the, the agenda item was placed with the understanding that what the board would be given an opportunity to do is to resolve both of these contemporaneously. I don't know, I'll let them speak for themselves, but out of fairness, I wanted to make sure that you guys were clued in. I don't believe that they came here today with the understanding that they would resolve one and not the other. I think these two matters, for reasons that are known only to your board lawyer, have been joined at the hip for strategic purposes and for reasons that I think are in the best interest of the county to get them both resolved at the same time. And so the, the, the way that the compromise developed was, we, we knew we were given an estimated amount by the road manager and the engineer that in their professional opinion, to the best of their ability, they felt like they could definitely get the road, Indian Mound Ridge, in shape with the appropriate base and acceptable to the residents out there for the number. Okay? I, I entered into a negotiation with the developer with the understanding in my head that we wanted to make sure we covered any eventuality, including cost overruns and inflation possibilities that would be necessitated by the reality of a delay in our action to get out there. Because Mike's just not going to go out there when it's wet like this. So we're going, we're definitely going to be in the summer getting it done. There will be a delay and we just don't know what asphalt's going to do between now and then. And we don't know what the cost of labor equipment, other things is potentially going to be. So that was factored in to the original offer. So where we are now is at a hundred and fifteen, we're at a number where we believe we can still get it done, but there's the, there's the possibility that we will miss it, you know, within reason, either above or below. that we will miss it, you know, within reason, either above or below. All right, so there's that. On the tax collector issue, what the hope was, was a recognition on the part of the board that we're not paying, we're not paying for something we didn't get the benefit of. The work was done. Right, Ms. Yee?
Absolutely.
And we're happy with the work?
Everybody loves it.
Right. So, it's not like we didn't get anything for the money. So, what the distinction that needs to be made is, what we understood we were going to have to pay was different from what we ended up...
Doubled.
Being asked to pay. That's correct. So, we missed it. I think there was just a lack of communication. There was a failure to understand the dynamics of the situation. There may have been conversations that took place between some parties and not others. There was a lot going on that, and of course, Ms. Pete had held problems with all of this.
Your mic has gone out.
Yeah, I think her mic's...
All right, let me ask you this question. You're talking about taking over the road from them. So, who, and Mike can't get the work done until the summer. So, if the road goes to pot in February, who's on the hook for that?
Well, at this point...
We would be.
Yeah, well, right now, no.
Who maintains the road till the summer, when Mike gets out there?
Well, as soon as a resolution is authorized...
Agreed upon, right.
As soon as it happens, then at that point, there will be a transfer of the road to the county.
So, what I'm saying, let's just say, let's just say we get something crazy happens, and some trucks come down and destroy the road, worse shape than what it is right now in March. That's not on them, that's on us, because we've taken the road.
If we've taken it, yes, that's right.
So, but if we agree to it, we've taken it.
Yes.
So, any other damage or upkeep between now and the summer, when Mike goes in to do it, is on our back.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
However, this isn't the first road.
I mean, three-pronged roads.
I understand maintenance between now and then is us, too.
Three-pronged roads with a fucking camp.
It's been holding up pretty well.
You can't qualify them other than...
No, I just want to be sure that just because we're not saying we don't get it in the summertime, we get it right now today.
Oh, we do, we did, so we say, yeah.
Yeah, you get it right now. There's not no delay in there, so... And I want...
What'd you look at it last, Mike?
The road be done, so...
When have you seen the road? Okay, that's what I'm saying. You've seen it recently?
And it may be perfect all the way through. I hadn't seen the road myself, and I don't, if I saw it, I don't know what I'm looking at, so it doesn't really matter.
I've been down it, but not recently.
Well, I mean, to me, if that's a concern, then we can have, that we will begin our maintenance in June. And if it's not to the point that it's at right now, then you got to bring it to that. If that's, you know, a big concern...
You want to pull out something like that?
Yeah, I mean, if they get, I mean, I want that road fixed. I agree, I want the subdivision be done, so I'm not...
It's not a question of it fit, I mean, it's in decent shape, wouldn't you say, Mike? I mean, it's, I mean, it's been there a long time, and they continue to put gravel on it, and it's been packed it in. It's just to the point that they're willing to bring something to the table to help us put a base on it, that we can move forward on it and give those folks out there some resolution to an issue.
And I might just simply add, one other thing I forgot, was that I think since we started talking about the one thirty-five, the guys here have spent about twenty thousand dollars upgrading that road with clay gravel. And it'll have some wash in the winter, but I don't look for it to really be a maintenance issue at all, based on what they did, so...
Depends on the monsoons we've made.
It could be fine.
Well, we don't know...
It's not going to flood on that hill, though, I can tell you that.
Well, I've got miles of gravel roads in my district. Anytime y'all want to come give us a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a mile for me to black, I'll be glad to.
Well, it may not be the perfect solution, but I always go back to something I did that told me one time, a long time ago. Is it a reasonable solution? I think it's a reasonable solution for both parties.
I think it is. I think Daniel's main question now is the collector's office, kind of that part of where you are there.
Yeah, I just, I was trying to wrap my head around how we came off twenty thousand on a road and giving up twenty thousand dollars and giving up, well, no, but you're still talking about paying that extra twenty thousand.
I know, we're just, yeah.
So, it's a fifty thousand dollar loss.
I don't know that it was dollars and cents. I think it was just good negotiating.
I said drop to seven.
Mr. Cross, I don't, I don't know if that was dollars and cents. I think it was just a good negotiating tactic on behalf of your lawyer. He's a very good lawyer.
He is that, I agree. Our main lawyer Bishop's not here, so...
Yeah, if, had I been in on the building at the beginning with, I'd probably...
Bishop was the one I think made negotiate this whole thing anyway, wasn't he? So, I'd kind of like to hear his take on the whole thing.
In good faith, I think Pete built the thing or renovated it.
I went there.
Oh, you went?
Yeah, in good faith, I think he was trying to do it to satisfy, you know, the request at the time, and he did jump in there and do it. I don't think the supervisors wanted to do that work when they got to looking at it themselves, because it was involved. And then, and then some additional work was requested, so...
Who requested the additional work, I guess is my question. Was that our group that came and saw you? I guess my original question, this is the last one I'll ask, I promise, I'm not going to draw this out.
Yeah.
But when we got to twenty thousand dollar quote, and the board voted to approve it, and then we got to forty-seven thousand, how did we get there without nobody saying anything about it, is my question.
Well, there was a twenty, twenty-one thousand dollar quote for the work that was to be done then, and then after the supervisor decided they didn't want to do that work themselves in house.
There was some of it that Tony was going to do.
There was an additional...
We came in on the board, we came in on the board and voted to approve twenty-one thousand dollars to do it, right?
Right, and then since that time, there was additional work that was asked to be done, and...
I guess that's what I'm saying. Who asked the additional work to be done that got us to forty-seven thousand?
Yeah, I assume that was one of the county employees that asked for that to be done.
We don't know who.
Well, I think it was Ms. Fortenberry, but at least been in part...
After the three went out there and they said, "Do it this way," I assumed, I took, I know what assumed is, that that would be okay if we did it, you know, added it that way, and you had to conform all of it together so that it matched. I mean, that's just the way it ended up.
Actually, he said it would be less if we did it the way we talked about it. But, but I...
If we had to do it over again, we'd have brought it directly to you, you know?
That's what I said, I don't see how, because these cabinets are not going to stay connected, and the floor's going to show everywhere it's pulled up, and the stain's not going to be the same, but, I mean, is that not exactly what we're on, Pete?
If we had, if we had somebody from the county authorize y'all to go to the forty-seven thousand dollar route, then it's not your fault. It's mine for not paying attention to it more.
But we didn't know about it.
And I'm not sure it's fault, because...
It's us anyway, I don't care if it was another...
It never was a problem to you.
I'm not sure it's a matter of fault.
Y'all were acting on behalf of what you thought was a county-directed, and I understand how you got to forty-seven thousand, because somebody from the county authorized you to do it. That's on me, so I got it.
Well, from what I understand, it's not on the taxpayer, because the taxpayer in the county, they're getting a very good product, very satisfactory product, and one Ms. Fortenberry is proud of. And I think the supervisors, when they get that office open, will be proud of it, and taxpayers will be, too.
So, where are we then? We're on this, we're on the compromise of the one fifteen for the road, and we're going to roll the other one to forty, cut a check for twenty, stretch the other one out over the other twenty over X number of times? Is that where we are?
Yeah, so we didn't, we never really got to the question of how do we pay the balance of the...
Well, I guess, I'll give you my take on it. If somebody from the county authorized them to go to forty-seven thousand, then we owe them forty-seven thousand. That's my take on it. And then, if you think the number's one thirty-five or one fifteen, that's what we need to charge that. Instead of horse bargaining between the two and trying to figure out more assumptions, I'd rather just stay with the original numbers and do what the county obligated Mr. Pete to do. That's what I'd rather, because that was, if somebody from the county told them to go to forty-seven thousand, then we're owing forty-seven thousand. I just didn't want to get to forty-seven thousand, and you got to forty-seven thousand, just the work got away from, and it just happened to that point.
Dang, I had him at forty.
Well, but we, but the county told them to go to forty-seven thousand.
I didn't.
I didn't either, but I mean, it falls on us at this point, so...
All right.
Well, the...
That's my thought, but...
For the record, and I completely understand where Mr. Cross is coming from, the, it feels like a right thing to do, but the legal reality is that until this board authorizes the action on the minutes, the only thing that this board has actually acted on is the initial estimate, okay? So, the incurring of the additional costs, regardless of where the request came from, without this board's authorization on the minutes, is not a, is not a legal charge that the county is required to pay.
It's right. It's not a legal charge, but it's an ethical, moral thing to do. If we come to you and say, "We want you to go to forty-seven thousand," whoever it is, if it's, it doesn't matter who it is, if they're a representative of the county and they tell you that, it's ethically and morally the right thing to do to honor our commitment, is, I'm going to leave, back up, that's my take on it is. So, we jacked that up, and that's on us, so here we are.
So, what we're, what we're attempting to do here is to, is to, and we may now be discovering unwittingly why it is that your board lawyer was so insistent that these two things be handled together, okay? We need for this to be a compromise of multiple potential claims that the board is going to act on. And you've been asked, at this point, to consider resolving both of these claims together, and I want to continue to try to beat that drum if I can. It seems that where we have general agreement, subject to the board's authorization, is that the one fifteen will satisfy the county's undertaking of the responsibility to finish out Indian Mound Ridge. We feel like we can do that.
When we sat down, it was Craig and I and Tim, and I tell Mike, y'all listening back there, we were four sitting down, horse trading on this thing, we came up with a hundred and thirty-five, and Craig says, "We're going to have to negotiate, so let's go up to one thirty-five and be willing to do that." When they came back with a counter offer at one fifteen, we sent Mike back down there and said, "Mike, Mike, look at it and see." Well, I'm not looking to give another opportunity to a break. And Mike came back and said, "I can make it work at the one fifteen level, based upon that little additional work they had done in between the two offers." So, that's how we got to, that's why we were willing to go, and we're proposing the one fifteen now on that route.
So, as a compromise for the reduction of the initial offer from one thirty-five to one fifteen, we're asking one of the members of Indian Mound Properties LLC to compromise the claim with respect to tax collector's office. And the compromise offer that you guys need to discuss now is, let's pay the estimate that you've already agreed to. I just stuck twenty thousand on that number. If the board feels better about sticking twenty-one thousand on that number, because that's closer to the estimate, or we'll actually go dig the estimate back out and get it down to the penny of what the estimate was and pay that as a lump sum, then all we need to discuss at this point is, what is the balance that the board is comfortable paying? Balance between whatever it is that you pay in lump sum and the forty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars that is the total amount owed.
For you, okay.
Between those two, we'll figure out an amount that we're willing to pay. I think Mr. Cross's position is, we owe the man, so pay whatever that is. And I believe, don't let me put words in your mouth, Daniel, but I think what you're saying is, we'll horse trade on the, on Indian Mound Ridge, the road, and horse trade on that.
The way I took him to say he do, he wanted the initial, pay what it was, and then listen, we just paid both ways.
I guess my thing, the reason you came from one thirty-five to one fifteen, because you're working a deal on the other side, it didn't matter, what my view is...
Now, let's back up a second there. The one fifteen and one thirty-five, that was never tied into the rest of the...
That's correct.
Never. That was never brought up in our conversation.
That was before, all that was before.
That was before, all before.
I just, I just want to be sure that, I just want to be...
Distinctively different than the horse trade on that one.
I just want to be sure that the one thirty-five number was what you needed.
Mike's one back there, he went down, and Mike and Tim went back and verified the work being done, the quantities that we're needing, and the amount we think we can get it done for.
That was all I wanted to be sure, is that Indian Mounds has enough money to do whatever it is, not to be offset here. Now, we may have to, but...
Well, at the end of the day, we may get that route, but right now, those two deals were done entirely separate.
Okay, I just, yeah, I just didn't want to move the one thirty-five down, not to have enough money to do Indian Mounds.
Would you entertain a motion to do the one fifteen and take the twenty, and, well, let's just say forty on the other, pay twenty, spread the other twenty out? Would you entertain going along with a motion that way?
Over three years?
I don't know the year. We're going to come up with the number of years.
What's on the lease?
The lease is actually a five-year lease, so sixty-month lease. We're probably six, a good six or seven months in, maybe even more. Can we start that in May? Is that lease in May? That lease started in May? Uh, I think it started in May. So, we may be seven months into that thing, so...
I just mentioned to Craig, as we were back there talking about it, Mr. Hallman had indicated that if we could go ahead and get both of them resolved today, he would agree to compromise with the hundred and fifteen thousand dollar payment on the road, and then whatever the books say the initial cost were, he would be able to take that now, if he could get that now, and then take the rest over two years.
The rest, all the rest, or take deduction?
Well, all of the rest over two-year period.
I was just going by what the board had talked about.
I guess my question is, why wait over two-year period?
We're paying lease, we're paying rent every month.
That's just what the lawyer suggested.
No interest in, just...
It's part of the compromise. In my opinion, there needs to be, I mean, you know, where they're running here.
This is, this is just me thinking out loud about it. If it's going to be a compromise, then, and I'm willing to say this in front of Mr. Pete, there has to be some willingness and acceptance of the reality that he didn't insist that any additional costs be brought before the board for authorization first. I'm asking for some accountability on that, and so by requiring him to wait over a two-year period to obtain his balance, there is at least some recognition and cost associated with that. That makes it a compromise.
So, you're going back to the forty-seven, instead of the one fifteen and forty-seven?
Well, I think the offer before you from the developers now is that that is what they would like you to consider. You haven't accepted that, that offer yet, so you have the opportunity to consider whether or not that is an offer you are willing to accept.
With us taking, I mean, with this package, and we're taking a road, it's a private road, and we have some exposure, could have, it could be, we don't know.
Can I interrupt just for a quick second? When you say that, we'll be careful, Craig and I both talked about this. This thing started back in the late nineteen ninety, just gone through probably at least three or four residential development ordinances and transfers. This is one of the only reasons that we're looking at taking this one, is because it's gone through three or four different administrations, you know? We don't want any more private roads, you know? There's really, we're not aware of anything else like that, and that is differentiates this project from that potential happening down the road with other private roads.
I think we have it fixed. I mean, we should have it fixed, but this doesn't happen.
I just want to make sure that we're not...
You were saying we got some exposure.
But I think that we are flexible, we're doing a little compromising on that end. I would like for Pete to compromise a little bit on our end and meet us at forty total.
Take the thirty-five hundred, the contractor's fee off of it, whatever that number will be.
Say what now?
There was a thirty-five hundred dollar contractor's fee for overseeing the reconstruction or the changes and so forth in the tax collector's office.
Pete being the contractor.
Oh, who's the contractor? He's not going to like that much.
And so, let's take that off, that was forty-three.
If we, if we cut it, what about Steve, will we cut a check today for the whole thing and get it down to forty?
I'm good, if he'll take it.
Write a check today for everything we owe you.
Yes, sir.
For forty, then would that be palatable?
As long as it's clear on the record...
And we got one fifteen over here, and you get a check, we're all done.
I want it to be very clear on the record that the reason that we are doing that is to be in a position to compromise both matters at the same time. Is everybody clear that that's what we're doing? That this is a compromise of both matters?
We just, don't need to let this happen again, because everybody else out there will want to be coming in, want to compromise.
I know, but we have to realize, on our tax collector's office, we had an opportunity to add more square footage right where we're at, and it's probably the, I mean, it's one of the fastest-growing areas, or is the fastest-growing area in Rankin County, and their business, I mean, they do as much as we do over here. We were going to have to move, and within four, five years, we're going to have to move, and it would cost us way more than what we paid here. paid here. And we now have good space. So, I think the taxpayers are fooled. I mean, I think we have done a good job in what we've gotten for the taxpayer. It's just us doing the negotiating now. But I would say, Judy, in three, four years, we'd had to find another place. And this spot wouldn't be available because he would have leased that. I mean, it's worked all in a good way. It's just whenever you get in there and start doing construction, I don't care if you're building a house or, like Jared said, take your car to the shop. They tell you the battery. They fix the battery and they tell you the starter. If you get the starter, before you know it, you got, you know, a little more in it than you thought.
Jared, you want to redo your motion? Are we kind of on page two?
I think so. I'd like to clarify and make sure that Ms. Morrison is aware of how the motion would be shaped up at this point and make sure you agree. Jared, I think the motion would be as follows. That we're going to settle the Indian Mound subdivision, long-term private road slash public road issue that has plagued Rankin County for quite some time now.
Right.
We're going to resolve that. The developer is going to pay to Rankin County the sum of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It's payable to Rankin County to be deposited with the understanding that that's going to be spent to enhance Indian Mound Ridge. And that is it. And the county is not going to accept for maintenance any other road in Indian Mound subdivision with the exception of Indian Mound Ridge and its associated cul-de-sac. Okay? And in addition, the county is going to cut a check to Almond Realty and Associates, Inc. for forty thousand dollars as a compromise and settlement of the amount that is required of the county to be paid. I'm sorry. My bad. My bad.
No, no. He said if we, if we cut the check today, forty. If we...
I just understood, I thought you meant the total was forty-six and you take thirty-five hundred off.
If we cut the, that's if we spread it out over the term of the lease.
If we just cut the check today. Alright, so that's one lump sum check.
Pete, are you good with that?
Yes.
Alright. So, that's forty thousand dollars lump sum payment payable today to Almond Realty and Associates, or payable as soon as we can get the check ready, to compromise and settle the amount for the rehabilitation, the upgrading of the Rankin County Tax Collector's Flowood Office. That would be the motion.
That's it? That's it?
You want to make it? You want to?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Alright, we have a motion by Jared, second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Okay, as if I hadn't hogged the agenda long enough, Mr. President, if we're ready to move forward.
Yes, sir.
Item P will be the ratification or approval of the emergency replacement of a heating system at our EOC Extension Service Building.
That's actually on the business side, University side. They're getting one out.
Okay.
But simply because of heating...
You want to come on?
No, don't let him come on.
Okay, never mind.
Hey, he's broke us from that. We've talked off.
License approved.
Yeah, for God's sake, approve. I said, so. Just Christmas, he won't be...
You ain't about to show up in here. We just approved it.
His strategery.
Words beat us now so bad. We ain't arguing him.
Yeah, very strategic. Way to go, Mike.
License approved.
Second.
Alright. Bob makes a motion. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item Q is, and by the way, this, this was done when Ms. Judy came into office in '03.
Before you get started, I need to, I need to mean it just a little bit. When I came into office, Alice had one cash, cashier, they only had one pot of money in others. The audit department decided we need, every clerk had to have their own cash box. And in other words, we've got more money in-house than we did back then. If we could raise that to eight thousand, she can turn around the next day and as soon as she deposits and give that back to you. But we need enough for each cash drawer because that's got to go in my account so I can account for all that and give back to you. And then she'll start fresh from the...
Yeah, this is nothing more than a transitional, this is a transitional, one elected official tax collector, transitioning to a brand-new tax collector. There has to be a stopping of Ms. Judy's term and a starting of Caroline's term. And those two things have to be accommodated and coordinated. So, for Caroline to have funds available while Ms. Judy is trying to close out, we need to allow for this advance. This would be out of General County, I believe. And so, it's just basically, it's floating some funds that are available. Those funds will be immediately repaid by Caroline once she has an opportunity then to settle new funds coming in.
Make a motion, we adjust the, a motion to eight thousand dollars for approval?
Second. Alright, we have a motion by Bob, adjust Q to eight thousand in lieu of five. And Jared seconds it. I guess we need to vote on changing this and then vote on whether we're going to do it.
No, I think I made that part of my motion.
Make motion for both? Okay. Alright.
I got one thing. Caroline, we're gonna hold you to that. You're right here.
Alright, Bob makes a motion. Daniel seconds. I think Jared actually seconded it first.
I let him have one.
Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Alright, guys, if I may, Mr. President, if I may impose, I would like to consider, I have the board consider adding one item under my section. I assumed that our road manager would have a section on the agenda. And so, I made a false assumption. So, I've asked Mike to come. If I can get you guys to consider adding a discussion of and potential action regarding the installation of fiber and how the county allows and permits the installation of fiber infrastructure by our friends who are coming into Rankin County and installing this fiber product. If I can get you to add that to the agenda, please.
Motion to add that item to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Bob makes a motion to add installation of fiber cable in the county. And Daniel, you seconded it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes to add it to the agenda.
We have with us today Mike Walker from AT&amp;T and also Grant Fox, who works with AT&amp;T. They're here with us today. And so, with the board's indulgent, at some point in this discussion, if the board is willing, they may, they may want to address the board concerning the discussion.
Good morning.
Morning.
Oh, I reckon y'all were putting a plan together to do the inspection on these permits. What we've looked at is, we've looked at a lot of different utility permits that's going on and around and different things. We've got good depths and everything on our utility permit. I reckon what I'm looking at is, and I've talked to Ms. Law about it, we want to put a couple of part-time inspectors on to start inspecting this stuff, make sure that we're getting it put in the right place and, and that it is on the right of way and that we're not getting on private property and that we're documenting what's going on out there on that. And that's what I'm here today to present to y'all, is ask for authorization.
How are we gonna pay them?
They're gonna come out of the road budget.
So, you've got some additional pins or spots that are there?
I've got some additional spots right now that I'm gonna use. We'll see how this goes and then we'll talk about it. I'm good until this summer, you know?
I think it's necessary, but I would like to see the permit help pay for it. We have to, I mean, we're having to do this because they won't inspect themselves. Or if they do, they don't tell us about it.
We hadn't come up with a dollar figure on that yet, Steve. And that was what we was gonna talk about today. If y'all wanted to do that, then we would start looking into that and seeing what the permit fees.
Well, I think it's necessary that we have some inspectors, but I'd like to look at the other avenue.
And, and we need some type of penalty for not following the permits or the requirements that you put out there. So, there needs to be some type of stake in the game on whoever's part, not AT&amp;T.
We got, we got a lot of different things, you know, that, there'll be bullet points that we'll have to, that our inspector will be looking at. We'll go into it. But I reckon as far as that fee right there, Daniel, what, I mean, what we thought was, I mean, we're gonna shut them down.
Pull the permit.
We're gonna pull the permit. You're gonna shut down for so many days.
But I guess what I'm saying is, that's never moved the needle for us. We've tried that for the last year.
Right.
And just pulling the permit, they're like, okay, good. I'll take a little vacation. We'll go hunting or whatever it is. I wanted to fish tomorrow too, so we'll screw this up. There needs to be some type, in my mind, some type of financial penalty for violating what the permit says that you shouldn't be violating on. Because there's no skin in the game for them. They, they don't care. So, it, because we've got to this point by numerous, 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 numerous violations. And it's just like, okay, we'll try to do better next time. Well, we promise, we'll do better next time. And they never get better. Because there's no financial penalty for not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So, I'm for having our inspectors out there not altering our budget to the point of just taking money out of your budget. You're still paying them. In my mind, they should have to compensate us a little bit for having to do that. But we'll just say, we'll fall on that sword again in order to put the public safety at heights of importance. But there should be, in my mind, some kind of financial penalty if they continue to violate what the permit says. If there's not, then just take the permit and rip it up and go away. And we'll just deal with, you know, the burning of ground as we go.
Well, I know one thing we, we come up with is, you know, that you'll have, like, you get three strikes. That's it. I mean, contractor comes out there, does something wrong, he's getting time off. Next time he's getting time off, third time, he's not welcome in Rankin County. He's out of here. So, a lot of different things we're gonna go through on. Not gonna get into it. Just kind of go over, you know, whoever is doing the boring work out there, we'll be signing the permit. Also, with whoever the contractor is that started the process, whether it's AT&amp;T, they have somebody, whoever, if they're not doing the work, whoever's doing the actual boring will sign that permit.
And I want to add, the only reason I'm bringing this stuff as the importance of, and where's the AT&amp;T guys at? Hey, the only thing I want to say, the reason I'm so upset and I'm so distraught about the whole situation is not that problems happen. I get you're gonna cut things. I get you're gonna be in the wrong spot. Things happen. Eight-one-one minute, I marked something properly. It may not be on your guys. My heartburn is not being notified when something happens. That if a permit says you need to be in this spot and you gotta alter for whatever reason, the reason may be totally valid, you contact us and say, "Hey, I gotta move because of this." It's a pure lack of communication, not just at AT&amp;T, but at all the people installing fiber in our areas, that when something's not right, you gotta notify the county. That's my big gripe. That's what we can't get, somehow we can't get that little one task accomplished. That when something tears up, water line cut, gas line cut, that that guy's phone right there doesn't ring or whoever the notification is. Not fussing that it got cut, because I know what happens. I'm upset about not being notified that causes us a public safety issue. That's where my concern is. So...
And in the contractor's defense, he didn't, he should have contacted county. That's what we'd asked. Instead, he contacted the public works in, I think, Flowood. But he should have just made that other call to say, "Hey, we're letting you know what's going on." That's what I think we'd asked. That's what Daniel's asking.
On that instance, yeah. On that instance.
Yeah. By just saying on that particular one, I think it really kind of blew it out of the water. So, that was the thing. So, I guess in some way, the contractor thought he was doing the right thing. But on the other side, he could have made one more step and just let somebody know in the county, EOC people, something to know because of the health safety situation.
For 2018 and 2019, I've come in here and just wasted breath and time that I'll never get back. So, my New Year's resolution, or whatever that is, is I'm not gonna bring up fiber insulation in 2020, ever. I don't even want to hear about it.
I bet you do.
I bet you do too. Because it's not gonna fit.
I wouldn't waste that resolution. I'd use another one.
Well, I don't keep them anyway. You know, I started out pretty good, you know. But that's where I want to get to. So, I want to have that understanding that, you know, I'm tired of dealing with fiber issues just for the simple fact of nobody listens. So, that's why I was saying, there needs to be some type of, because I've built this crescendo up for the last two and a half years on constant, 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 and nobody cares. And I totally understand nobody cares because it's not in front of their houses. They're not the person who's getting tore up. But in order to put some skin in the game for the contractors that do this stuff to our citizens, we gotta hold them better accountable to what we're doing.
I don't know, is there a Mr. Jesus in the house? I think that's how you pronounce that.
He's in jail. He probably Jesus is over there though.
Yeah, he's got a different name.
He wrote a letter. He wrote, yeah.
He sends along emails. I mean...
You're right.
He's in the jail.
He's somebody's sub or subcontractor, whatever. I would say to AT&amp;T or C Spire or whoever's got the contractor, the permit, if y'all want to talk to me, you call me, you write me. I'll meet you at your office. But I don't like these people that are three layers down trying to talk your business to me. I can't do that. I, I communicate with y'all and I can't get in touch with those people when they're messing up. And you're out there and I have a reservoir each where they're going, you know, a hundred of them are out there working and I can't find them. But in the last couple of weeks, this guy's written letters and called and I answered him and said, "Sir, please go through the person that had contracted the permit. I don't feel comfortable talking to you about that stuff." But I thought he was gonna be here.
No, he ain't come up.
Okay.
Sure. Come on up.
Y'all okay with proceedings or comments?
Yes. Yes, morning.
My name is Michael Walker with AT&amp;T. And I thought my attorney was, but he stopped. If I may just make a few comments, we're not opposed to any of the changes requested. Just want to make note that AT&amp;T probably does more work in the right way than any of the other providers. And all through the year, we've always tried to work with the county. We've, we've done everything that's been asked of us to do. We've had people on site. We put signs up to let know who's, who to call and who's going to work. We passed our business cards. So, we're pretty easy to find when we're doing work and we do report it. It's just sometimes when other providers come in and a lot of smart, and they do a lot of damage, it always falls back that we're the ones that...
You, you guys have done a tremendous job in improving after the Avalon debacle.
Right.
We had a bunch of problems over in Avalon. Same type of road stuff went on. But since that point, I'll give it to you, we haven't had those complaints from AT&amp;T. And it may be because most of the fiber's insulated.
No, we still have plenty more to go.
But my point is, you're, you're better than what the Avalon debacle brought to you. So, I don't know if we just got fewer permits or what it is. But you are, and C Spire was the one that caused this one. I'll say it. I know you don't want to say it.
I'm not gonna say it.
That's what got us to where we're at right now. But understand the importance of what we're asking.
Absolutely.
Is the communication side. And I just, I don't know how to make it any better to say it. I'll throw myself on the floor if you'll agree to it. Just, we need communication.
Oh, we're all in, in favor of improved communications. And I just want to make the point that AT&amp;T has really worked real hard with the county.
We've gotten better since our last...
To address all, all the issues. And we'll continue to work. And we just don't want it to be thrown on us, all the issues that have happened and we're the ones that pay them.
We are gonna treat everybody the same.
Oh, absolutely.
AT&amp;T, it doesn't matter who it is. They're all the same side of it. And this has been a buildup to get us to this spot.
Right. But, but just to your point though, the resolution, we are gonna be placing more fiber.
No.
Okay.
It's gonna be tough to manage.
That's right. That's just the, the direction that the future's going in. But we'll be more than happy to work to get in as fast as we need to.
Janice, will we have fiber come back up? Take this away from me, will you? Take this off this desk. Yeah, cut it off. That's right.
I think Mike covered...
I would, I would like to be part of your planning committee as to where it's going.
I hope it's y'all's district.
We've got plenty of room to run it out there in the rural area. You got a lot of space.
I'm cheering for you. I'm cheering for you.
One thing that, that, that the plan that we intend to itemize for you guys, this really is discussion unless y'all are prepared to take some action today. But we want to itemize for you this process of having inspectors available. We think that that's one of the missing pieces as it relates to the county's ability to communicate is dedicated persons on the ground visually observing the installation and in a position to be able to both notify Mike and others when there is a breach and/or correct on the ground anything that is, appears to be outside the base of the permit. One of the things that I think I'm more excited about than anything is that a lot of times, the big issues that we have are just simply where in the right of way the, the infrastructure is being installed. And, and so, an observer who can determine, you know what, they... what, they, they're laying that fiber in the beauty strip, we can't have that, and being in a position to stop the work at that moment and, and have them take corrective action to get where they need to be, is, is, in my opinion, it's the miss, one of the missing pieces. And so, communication, eyeballs, and a quicker response from the county before it gets totally in the ditch.
All right, so Harrison, with this plan here that you got put together, if we get approval today, can you get those pieces in place and lined up so sometime by June or July, these fiber people are back working in the reservoir?
Yes, and I reckon the reason I'm in front of y'all today and didn't hand out a bunch of bullet points and different things of what we're gonna be looking at, 'cause if we don't get this passed, there's no need going any further.
I agree.
Than what we was talking about.
And the other thing I'd like to add is that Slay comes up with some type of penalty system financially, that if they mess up, we start at a hundred thousand dollars, we'll work our way up to some serious one.
But I reckon, I reckon the, the part is, is, is nobody thought we were fixing to lay this much fiber if we've been dealing with in the last year and a half.
Sure, that's true.
You know, nobody comes and say, hey, we're fixing to put fiber in every neighborhood in here, it just kinda come piecemeal, and we've kinda been working on this, and we're, I know we're way behind the eight ball, but we fixing to get way in front of it. And I talked to AT&amp;T and Ceasefire about that we're gonna get this in process before we go any further, you know?
You'll be, you'll be able, you think sometime in January, turn about Louis Park.
Yes, I'm hoping by the fifteenth, if everything will go right, you know, we should be ready to start looking at permits and.
I'll ask a question, I'm gonna have Mr. Budget Hawk over here, 'cause he keeps throwing that at us. How much money do you think it's gonna cost for us to inspect all this? And how are you gonna inspect it, and where's that person coming from, and all that good stuff?
Well, we're. Say, part-time.
We're gonna just find some part-time people.
Full-time person?
No, 'cause then you got.
Not right now.
I mean, you, we've got this, we've got the same problem we have with, with builders and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah.
When they call for an inspection, we can't say, well, he's already got his hours in this week, we can't send him in until next week.
So I don't think you got.
I've got, I've got enough part-time, or talking about getting enough part-time people, Mr. Bob, four, to be exact.
Four?
That I've always got somebody in rotation during.
I've got enough warrants.
As long as you think you can do without just.
I don't know, I don't know if it'd take four to do it, but, you know, I don't wanna be.
And it also depends on how much fiber's going down.
Well, yeah, and you're right, this is a big time, and everybody's pretty pushing hard, Ceasefire is, you know, and they hit, you know, I don't know, I get that.
I mean, there's some days I may have one out there, someday, I don't see having, we won't have four out there at one time, but I've gotta have that capability because.
Just to me, four, I mean, this, this has worked his out if he need to.
Right.
This is your list to pull from.
Right, just go have the list to pull from and.
Yeah, rather than them all be out there at one time.
No, I, I'm with you.
No, probably just one.
And, yes, sir. On the issue of penalty, and, and I know you're, that, that's not in jest, that, that, I mean, that's reality.
No, I know.
That we need to look at that issue. There's, there's some things that, some dynamics about this that are unique. This, this is a federal communication commission overseeing jurisdictional issue, they, they have federal permission to be in the right of way, public right of way. And so our, positionally, we, we are, we determine the method by which they engage that right of way, but the fact of their being allowed to be there cannot be altered or changed. We cannot be seen to impede their federally administered permission and jurisdiction to be there, but we can provide structure for that entry, and public safety is where we have to hang our hat, and I think with respect to penalties, we're gonna have to be careful to attenuate whatever it is we come up with a penalty to what our actual damages are, okay? I don't, I don't think we're gonna be allowed legally to be punitive, it's gonna have to be directed at what is the cost to the county for whatever it is that is violating our permit, okay? So we, we need to spend time working through that process and determining what is a legitimate.
I'm good, I just wanna speak, I just wanna be thinking of that.
Yes, understood.
It has to be something that definitely is off their, their easement right away.
So there would be, there would be, occasionally there are going to be situations where they cause damage. There, there's a cost associated with that, and that needs to be dealt with, and I'm confident that the AT&amp;Ts and Ceasfires know how to deal with that. What they've not been asked to do is to, at this point, under our context, is to consider damage to the county, all right? Our right of way, and I need to look into that issue and determine what are our rights.
Just some options.
Just start looking at it.
And the only other thing, are we getting to a point to where we can say certain contractors can operate in Rankin County? 'Cause we oughta be in one in the middle of Castle Woods, the contractor that's working over there, that's been working over there.
I'm gonna lean on Craig.
Oughta be the one that, that's got us in a lot of this situation.
Correct.
So, you ain't gonna, you ain't gonna describe it now, but in your mind, I would like some type of presence saying, I don't want those renegades back in your.
Yes, and I, I think, obviously, we, we want to try to be open in our communication. We're asking, we are asking these installers, these federal services, that we're asking them to be open in their communication with us, and so we need to be open in our communication back with them, and we need to look at the issue of whether or not we can in fact condition a permit on who it is that their vendors are.
So I guess I think we approve the contractors that go to work.
Yeah, and, and we need to look at that issue, and I, obviously, I wanna reach out to, I don't think, I don't think, I'm gonna let Mr. Walker speak for himself on this or speak for AT&amp;T on this issue, but I don't think they want to be aligned with contractors that we have substantial problems with violating our permits. I think they'd like to know, maybe they oughta do some exploring as to what other contractors might be available to do this work for them, so that they don't constantly stay in a bad position with county, when we know that there's contractors that are rogue.
I guess, I guess if we see it coming, we see problems coming.
Yeah.
It would probably behoove them to understand that.
So I, I'd love for the door to be open, and Ms. Fox is here, and he and I can work on this together, but I'd love for the door to be open for us to be able to structure the permit in such a way that it solves all of that, their issue and ours.
And I know AT&amp;T's here, but let's be sure we also reach out to our good friends at Ceasefire.
Yes, sir.
So I wanna be sure we reach out. 'Cause this is not, this is not, this is not, I know you don't, but it's not just that AT&amp;T, I wanna be sure I make that clear, so.
Yes, and, and we've got some leaks set up this week with some, all the utilities on some right-of-way stuff, and we was gonna reach out at that point, kinda let them know what's going on, that was why it was kinda important to try to get this going today, so we can start getting them in the direction that we're going.
All right, so do, do you need a motion to go down that route for part-time people for Harrison, or what do you think?
What we talking about pay for them?
It's just whatever, Charlie done, still inside his budget.
That's wide open.
Well, I mean, I think he caps it, whatever, I mean.
Yeah, it ain't gonna be that much here.
That's what I'm saying, we'll give them a vehicle.
We're gonna have a vehicle, just, they'll have to come get a vehicle, they may be running all over the county, but they're gonna be taking one home.
You know, obviously, I'm gonna let the board make its own decision about whether it wants to act there or not. I, I would suggest to you that we got enough structure here, you got enough information, if we can bring you something on the second, or the sixth, the eighth way, doesn't matter.
Let me get with that.
If we can bring you something.
We're meeting on the second.
All right.
I don't know.
Bishop, we gonna be here on the second?
I'd just sue not be on the second.
I can, I can promise you Bishop will not be here on the second.
Mess up the holidays.
All right, let's, I'd say, go back and bring us something that we can.
Why don't we just plan to have you something on the sixth, it'll be on the.
So y'all okay as far as moving? 'Cause I mean, to get this inspector, I mean, we need to start talking to people and seeing, I mean, it could take a couple of weeks to hire them.
Where they were.
Get you a list today.
Yeah.
And then also reach back out to whoever we've got permits pulled on and give them a timeframe which we're doing, so they can kinda plan.
I told them all it'd be that first year.
Yeah, so I mean, just ballpark, give them a time that, hey, we're, we're coming back to you, so.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, just, I guess, let the record reflect, no action was taken on this addition to the agenda. We just had a discussion.
Just discussion.
I, I will have probably a couple matters for you, executive.
We have, Mr. Wanda Martin.
Good morning.
You've been sitting so patiently.
Item A is the new Rankin County misdemeanor facility, authority to page AH&amp;H Architects' the final invoice for architectural services through 100% of construction of the new misdemeanor facility in the amount of $25,424, and authority to issue that check.
This is the last check to be in for that facility, is that I read?
Heard that file.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Bob to approve, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item B is the new Rankin County misdemeanor facility, approval of final pay app number 21 to Flagstar Construction in the amount of $118,851.79, which primarily includes the retainage that was being withheld and authority to issue that check.
Motion to approve.
Second. Bob makes motion to approve, Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
I'm gonna cut her off before she gets to C, just to approve C as you read it on request of those vehicles, so she don't have to go through serial numbers of a police that intercept her in Missouri.
Yeah, right, right.
So I'll make a motion to approve C as read it on the agenda.
Second. All right, Daniel makes motion to approve C. I think Bob, who, who got the second?
I did.
Jared got the second.
I did, I'll take that.
Any other discussion, and under that, any other discussion, I don't wanna read all VIN numbers and stuff like that, but just for people that may not have an agenda in front of them, I'd like, I'd like for everybody to know that when our sheriff needs cars, he finds used, good used vehicles at great prices, brings them down here and puts them in service and saves the taxpayers. This is what this is.
Two for one.
Yeah, at least half price, where he's buying vehicles and, and using them here in Rankin County and saving us money from what it would've cost on new vehicles. So we had a, a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion pass.
Item D, authority for the Sheriff's Department to accept quotes on installation in the amount of $809.95 and a monthly service fee in the amount of $113.99 for DirecTV to be installed in the new misdemeanor facility with Brad's Electronics certified DirecTV affiliate for a two-year contract.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Bob, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor?
All.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
And the last item, approval to accept contract with Statewide Business Appraisals LLC for a four-year contract in the amount of $146,300 annually, and authority for president to sign documents.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, Bob makes motion, Daniel seconds. Being, I'm gonna be the one that has to sign it, what is this?
That's your personal property stuff, isn't it?
The tax assessors?
Yes, tax assessors.
For tax assessors.
That's your computer, he should ask, they come, they go in there and make sure that it's all valued correctly and they're paying the appropriate taxes on it, and it's up to Slay to collect it all, right, Slay?
Yes, sir.